All right, at this time, we'll uh. We'll stand for silent prayers, meditation, I have you see fifty. All right, this time, I ask Commissioner Ring to lead us in the plan.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. All right, this time, we'll have a roll call, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Our roll call consists of Commissioner Jessica Bill Shepherd, Commissioner Isaac Owens, Vice Chairman Jay Wesley Rain, our Chairman Joshua Derris.
Another person, thank you, ma'am, I'm getting one to you as well. Before we start our meeting, um, two announcements. Um, number one, if you have a cell phone, most people do, go ahead and please turn them silent or either vibrate. If you have a need to. Got it. If you have a need to take a call, no, she ain't got it, she ain't got it. Okay.
Uh, I don't know.
Oh, you want on the phone, okay, alright.
So, when we follow up during your meeting.
Okay, alright, our meeting, okay. Um, if you need to take a call, please step out those doors, away from the doors because try, sound does travel in here pretty well. And if your phone go off in the meeting, please quiet as soon as you can, alright? Um, second announcement, this is a regular meeting. That means commentary, um, comments from the general public, um, will only be, um, taken or considered if someone have knowledge of the matter we're discussing to help us come to a better conclusion. Um, I think this body, um, knows community well enough, one of us or more of us should know who's in the community that can help us deliberate and make decisions. So, allow us the latitude to determine that, but other than that, this is not an open meeting. Or what have you, so please respect those announcements, alright? At, um, this point, do we have a motion and a second for the approval of today's agenda?
So, who?
Second.
It's been properly moved in second that we consider, I mean, that we approve this agenda, alright? Um, favoritism, you know, by voice, for I.
Aye.
Do we have approval of the regular minute meetings, August fifth? Uh, motion and second.
Someone.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second that we, um, approve the regular minute meetings from August fifth meeting, uh, in favor, let it be known by voice, for I.
Aye.
Motion carried. Meetings are approved. We don't have anyone sign up for any specific items. Okay, thank you, alright. At this time, we have, uh, Mr. Orlando Wakowski is, uh, under general to speak on the adjustment to the city government, um, city formal government for strong mayor system. Uh, Mr. Wakowski, um, podium, not sure first and last name, your residency, and, and basically, um, you'll have five minutes, once you announce, I will set the timer. Get more to you, sir, get more.
Okay. My name is Orlando Wakowski, uh, my address is eight one eight Peytonville High Circle. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, for the opportunity to be in front of you this morning. Uh, I stand to address a meaningful conversation around the city of Cordill concerning our formal government. Being a resident for five years now, I've been able to invest in the real estate and small businesses. Uh, so Cordill is home for me and my family. Since being here, I've experienced a variety of the city has to offer, some good and some bad. While there's extreme focus on the bad in this community, as assured mainly because it's the easiest thing to talk about, um, I'm reluctant to rush to judgment, uh, rather offer a comprehensive and direct shift in our strides forward, long term. As many of you know, our city operates under a formal government that allows certain powers and responsibilities to the chairman and the commission. Currently, we're in a transitional period where our government moving towards a weak mayor formal government. This means that the chief policy advocate and mayor's power will be limited going forward. So, any executive functions and responsibilities for one individual won't happen, still has to go through everybody to try to achieve the goal of the common people. Uh, while this model has its merits, data and information from other cities suggests that a strong mayor formal government would better fit the city as in the state is seeing right now. A strong mayor formal government often provides clear leadership, more accountability, and more of a direct response from the residents and the formal government that's at him. Research from various municipalities indicate that cities with a strong mayor tendency a quicker response to issues along with more strategic planning, increased transparency, and enhanced community engagement. Uh, it streamlines the decision-making process, makes a clear line of accountability, and benefits residents, businesses, and city staff alike. Transitioning into a strong mayor formal government is a process that requires careful planning and okay, and inclusive dialogue. It involves amending the city charter, which typically requires a public referendum, and ensuring that the community understands the implication of such changes. This process includes legal procedure review, to understand the requirements for the charter amendments, public education campaigns to inform residents about the benefits and responsibilities associated to a strong mayor, community engagement forms, and a formal vote by the residents, uh, to adopt a new governance model. Given the significance of this decision, I respectfully urge the city commission to consider convening a work session solely dedicated to this topic. Such session would allow for a meaningful dialogue that the community will express their views and help build a clear consensus. It would provide the opportunity for city officials to present detailed information, answer questions, and collaboratively explore the best governing structures for Cordill's future. I believe that engaging in this process openly and inclusively will strengthen our democracy, improve city management, and ultimately serve the best interests of all residents. I encourage you to take a step towards transparency and a community-based decision. Thank you for your time, your leadership, and your commitment to Cordill. I look forward to working together to shape a governance model that ensures continued growth, prosperity, and accountability for our city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, you have about fifty seconds left before it is that, and then guess that you won't say that you haven't said so far?
Um, not really, you know, I mean, this city is built, you know, it's here, I mean, there's plenty of opportunity to change any wrongs that's been established, and, uh, you know, we can only look for the future, we just gotta work together to make it happen. Appreciate y'all.
Thank you. One moment, see if the commission has any questions, comments. Any questions, comments?
I'll say thank you for calling.
Thank you.
Um, thank you, sir, for, um, all you do in the community, um, thank you for coming highlighting this issue. Um, the one thing I would say, I, I think the public is not made aware of this enough. We're not only, um, going away from any sense of a strong mayor system over the last three, four years, this body has even, um, removed authorities and powers from the chairman position. Who, um, I was in a GMA class, and we were sending the class and, you know, even some elected officials don't understand that's different structures of government. Because one mayor was talking about how she goes in and talks to the department heads and, um, you know, you know, giving them encouragement really is what she was saying, and elected officials chopping it to bits to just eat her up. And, you know, then when she was done, it was like, but you can't do that, and, and she was like, no, I have a different charter. It's like, I'm a, I'm a strong mayor, and, and, and my system, um, we don't have a city manager or administrator or anything of the type. But elected, some elected officials, and some of these people had been in their seats for a while, didn't know that. Cause I guess they thought every system was like theirs. Um, and then, you know, we had a conversation about basically, you know, for once, the facilitator in the group said, read your charter.
Yeah.
Because it can be different, it can be quasi. While we still operate currently in a weak mayor system, we just call it chairman commission, the chairman had some, um, some authorities that was a little bit different than what you'll normally call a weak mayor, like vetoing for instances, where the ordinance, you know, um, I could veto. And now the commission get to come back and override it like the regular process. But sometimes it's a little bit hybrid, I ain't such black and white, or what have you, but, um, what this commission did is what I consider a class A abomination to the people. Because it's legal, I checked the, you know, the legality behind it, but it's, I don't think it should be legal. That's a bigger matter probably for the state and the Supreme Court. This commission went and made an at-large seat, and I'm mostly talking to the public. Because in this at-large thing, a person like myself, or whoever's running, um, would go and have to collect the majority votes all over the city. And then they come up here on this commission and they, they can be another, you know, just a commissioner. As I said recently, it don't bother me when I go around, people call me commissioner. Uh, but it gets to me because it's a lack of education in the community, and that lack of education is such. When I spent the last four years up here arguing about, I'm chairman, not just a commissioner, it wasn't to put anybody lower than me because we all get elected, but it is to be in line with the charter. Because the chairman had bullet points and sections to their responsibility. But part of the argument was, no, you don't have no more authority than we have, but that's not what the charter said. Wasn't a lot of authority, or what have you, um, but when you name something and you call something a name, it brings responsibility or ideal of what that thing is, and so there was a lot of misinformation in our community. But this commission said, we're gonna do at-large. It's unfair to the people, and I remember Commissioner Reeves saying specifically to me that, you know, people hollering about a mayor, we'll give them a mayor, we'll give them the same type of mayor that Diana has, right? Diana revolves in a weak mayor system, or what have you. Where people have consistently asked for in this community exactly what you talked about, which is a strong mayor. But this commission better than leave it up to the people, they didn't put it on a ballot referendum. They use a law, they just sent it to the general assembly because it was three votes on this commission to have it, and they did it in spite of me. But what we have to realize that I wouldn't be chair forever. Now, what can potentially happen, you can have people that would never, can never get elected, citywide, that can be mayor. And that was the goal of the current at-large system. Because it's, it's, it's a cheat, or what have you, way of doing it. So, you don't have to get elected and earn a majority of the city votes. You can come up here and just because you have two other votes, or what have you, cause some people will vote for themselves shamelessly, um, and become mayor without having to collect or get the majority of votes in the city. So, we have not only weakened any sense of going towards someone that the people can hold accountable for direct results. We are now entering to the phase with this election of this commission fixing, um, who they want instead of who the people want is their mayor. So, that's where we are.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, if you may, if I can speak.
Yeah, yeah, please.
Okay, so, I understand that, uh, and yeah, that is something that the people should have a say-so in. Um, that's why I believe a work session solely for that topic would benefit the residents more than anything. It's a city that we all have to take care of, it's a city that a lot of people who's been here way before me and will be here after me is proud of. And so, just hearing what they have to say, you know, bringing them up to speed to what's going on, and, um, allowing them to have the chance to say yes or no, this is what I want, will be fair to the people. Um, and as the commission, I mean, by no means am I, you know, dimming the progress that's already been made or criticizing what's already happened, because you only can do what's present before you at the time. Um, but moving forward, we always have the chance to become better, we have the chance to make things the way we want them to be. Without, you know, whatever dominant struggle it is, whatever, you know, rift that may be between anybody. So, the job is to take care of the city of Cordill, the job is to make sure our children have a future in a place where they like to stay, like to build, like to secure their family. And I'm pretty sure with everybody sitting up here, that's the goal for everybody. Is to see their children grow up in a community that they take pride in and love to continue that. Whatever legacy you trying to build throughout your, you know, your life, it starts from where you grew up, or where you was raised, or where you decide to settle at. Um, me personally, you know, when I dropped my daughter off to school, her safety, her confidence in me, you know, is what I look forward to seeing when she grows up, like, hey, you know, this man is what shaped my future. And in Cordill, the lack of accountability with whatever, you know, structure is set, whether it's at home, whether it's out in the community, needs to be adjusted, and it takes men from the same community to help adjust that future. I believe everybody in here has the potential to change one life, or, or one child growing up to make sure they have strong morals, they really hold on to their values and make everybody proud. But we know children can deviate from that plan at any time. But they're gonna revert back to what they were taught and what they were known. So, when people talk about city of Cordill, they shouldn't be highlighting missing people, you know, murders, unsolved murders, why the camera's not working, you know, something small like that isn't really a major problem until you need it. Like, we don't have the cameras that we need to try to help a family in need because X, Y, and Z is the excuse. You know, that family doesn't need excuses, that family needs action. And I'm pretty sure that's why the people elected the commission we have now, because they are people of action. And they can take whatever situation that's going on in their respective wars, you know, uh, you know, adjust whatever needs to be adjusted and then move forward. You know, whether it's just addressing the issue, doing what they can to isolate the problem and making it better, or they find a clear solution. I'm sorry, my back hurts. Unless they find a clear solution. For the problem at hand.
You can sit, sir.
Yeah, but, um, that work session would mean a lot to the city, I mean, especially whenever, you know, the time that passed that, that was implemented. It probably wasn't done in the best interest of the people, so now that we're here today, you know, we can make a change for the people of Cordill that have benefited our families and the people coming after us.
Thank you, sir, um, commissioners can make a motion for a work session at any time. So, I'll leave it to the commissioners to make a motion for a strong mayor work session. If that's what you're asking for a correction.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Are you entertaining the motion, is that what you're asking?
Well, and I mean, one of the sets, yes, I, I think we could, yeah.
Well, I think it's definitely something we can move and make a motion to, um, have a discussion about it for sure.
Are you making a?
I'll make an official motion, I'm saying.
Do we have a second? The silence says we have no second.
Well, thank you.
If I could, I would, cause I'm in agreeance with you, but I don't, you know, I don't get a vote or I can't make motions. It's true. But I will say, that's the beauty, and that's the one sweet spot with the large system.
Oh, yeah.
No matter, and even if you're a commission, you better be careful because you can make motion at any time. And so, the level of, it's always screwed wherever people try to put you, just gotta find it. So, um, thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank y'all.
Alright, and thank you for your family as well, being here and deciding Chris County Cordill is your community to raise your family and kids.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you. Yes, sir, thank you. The last thing I add to, that is, I wanna be clear about what this community, um, I agree with Mr. Wakowski about what we need. That's why you have to be careful with elections, the people have been saying this for a long, long time. And the system that we're going to again is a sham, is a ruse, is a mock of what the people ask for. And, but I will put the onus back on the people because people here continually vote for people who don't care about what they ask for. That's the shame in this, democracy can't work if there's no maintenance, there's no accountability. And there's volumes and volumes of people for a long time have been asking for a strong mayor system. But because we have elected someone who likes to play games and play off the emotion of people, then what we're gonna get is a mockery of what the majority of people ask for. In this new, in the new government that will be ushered in in twenty twenty-six, whatever that may look like, or what have you. It would be a mockery of what the people ask for. We have seen time and time again, citizens have came up here and asked for reasonable requests. It's nothing better, hearing is just a hearing. To hear what the people have to say, we all should be lined up for that. Whether we accept it or move forward with it or not, we, if citizens have asked for things, we should be in favor of hearing them out. And seeing as that's any way we can move forward, because at the end, that is the people's government. And the people need to remember that come November the fourth. It is your government, whichever way you wanna choose it, choose it, whichever candidate you want to choose, choose. But it is your government. And as you see time and time again, especially over the last four years, the majority of this commission have not moved when you came and gave moving speeches or requests, reasonable requests. That's the death of complacency, that's why the West Side looks like what it looks like. Because that's been complacency of your issues don't matter, but your vote does. And if I can keep getting your vote, I don't care about what you say, because you don't care uh, enough to continually come up here and hold me accountable. So, again, thank you, Mr. Wakowski, for sharing that. You don't know it, but before you move here, that was something people have pushed for continuously, or what have you. And they're gonna get a mayor in twenty twenty-six, but not the one that they asked for. And the person, the people who designed that system know that very well. Um, being specifically Commissioner Reeves, Commissioner Rain, and Commissioner Shepherd. They know very well what the people wanted, but it's not in their interest to do it because probably won't look like any of them. So. Alright, with that, we'll go ahead into our department head reports, first up is community advancement. Your morning to you, Mr. Hill.
Morning, morning.
How's everyone doing?
Doing good.
Um, we are giving two consecutive reports, so I'll make a brief. Uh, on August the sixth, I attended a meeting about the chip, uh, grant to, uh, get updates. Um, on, excuse me, I attended the, uh, Seventh Street redevelopment, um, plan meeting to, uh, talk about, uh, redevelopment for Seventh Street. I conducted a workshop for the five oh four grants, which is home repairs for people that did not qualify for the chip program on August the seventh. Had a meeting with a grant writer to discuss, uh, some innovative technology, ARVR, um, technology to try to bring to Cordill, um, economic development administration grant meeting that was held at the hospital, attended that meeting. Uh, we talked about some potential infrastructure funding. And then attended the meet and greet at the high school, which was great, had, had a great, um, time there on July the thirtieth. Uh, meeting with the new, um, superintendent and the new principal of the high school. August nineteenth report, just a update on August the fifth, I did meet with the CGAE director of the, uh, Chris School System about that ARVR technology. We have, uh, subsequent meetings that will be coming up. Chip program again, August the sixth, attended that meeting, uh, in Camilla. On August the eighth, there was a meeting held with Smith Douglas Homes, and they're looking to bring some development here that were total somewhere between seventeen to twenty million dollars for housing and infrastructure. Uh, had a land bank, uh, programs meeting, we're gonna have the Georgia Land Bank Authority meeting in October the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, that is the summit for land banks. Seventh Street redevelopment meeting, um, was, uh, August the twelfth, again, they're putting together a, uh, workshop for the community to come out and hear about the redevelopment plan. Uh, I talked to a USDA servicer who would be able to help expedite the five oh two and the five oh four program. So, I'm still trying to get, gather information there, once I do that, I will get back to you, and I'll work with the city manager to make that happen or to, to look into it. And lastly, the wanted subdivision, had a, um, call with them about the, uh, progress there. Their surveyor should be out in the next week or two to relay the plat, once that happens, then they will bring the, uh, the, uh, plat in for approval, and after that, they, you know, it's a shovel-ready project, so we should be able to move fairly quickly once they get the approval. And that's my opinion.
Any questions for Mr. Hill?
Uh, Mr. Hill on the five oh two and five oh four grant workshop?
Yes, sir.
What was your turnout like with that?
That particular, once I found out that there was a servicer, I didn't know that there was a servicer available for that. So, I actually had people come to the session, I think we only had about six people. I had other people that wanted to attend, but I suggested that they did not come. Because I found out about the servicer who could process their applications much faster than. because I found out about the servicer who could process their applications much faster than them coming to that session. But because we had already posted it on the website, I went to the community clubhouse where we were hosting it and met the people that I could not reach, there were several people, I have about thirty or forty people that are interested in that five oh four program. But the people that I did not know about, the people I could not reach, I did not want them to show up at the community clubhouse and nobody be there or have sign out there. So those six or so people, I sat with them, talked with them, gave them applications. And now we're trying to get the servicer to come in because they're saying they can process it like, you know, onsite and just make it a lot uh expedite the process a whole lot quicker than uh if an individual fills out an application, puts it in the mail or send it.
So we should probably be looking at probably scheduling another something, or would that be something that you would host for the servicer to come? Or how would we get the servicer to interact with those people?
Well, that's, the, the, the goal is to set up sessions at the community clubhouse for that servicer to come in on multiple occasions. Those people who already have contact information for reach out to them, let them know the servicer's there. Uh, put the information back out on the website, should we need to do that, and have additional people come in. But again, I'm working with the city manager to, to get all of those details before we move forward on anything.
But, oh, go ahead.
That is correct, that is correct, these are people that could not qualify for the CHIP program because of the style home that they had. Trying to accommodate them as well.
And Maurice is working with them because I found out um yesterday that they are going to charge fifteen hundred dollars to come here to present the information. And I think he wants to say seventy-five dollars for each person to complete an application, so. You know, it's different from the CHIP, whereas the CHIP is, you know, is free. Uh, and so, uh, when I found out about fifteen hundred dollars, I mentioned to Maurice, we need to find out what is that fee for. You know, because we're paying, well, they're requesting a payment of fifteen hundred dollars to come and speak with the residents, but you know, if there's some other way we can work with them to get that information, but that's what I'm waiting on to see. You know, the fifteen hundred dollars that they plan to, you know, present or bring to this community.
Yeah, they gave, they told me, and they told me verbally, and what I've asked for is in writing, so I can present.
So we're saying fifteen hundred dollars, they're expecting the city to, that we're going to need to pay that? Okay, and then that will be for just the one time?
No, sir, three, three times, three sessions, no matter. So that fifteen hundred will cover those three sessions.
Five hundred each session?
Yeah, sessions, and then they're bringing scanners and they're processing the applications onsite. Um, they'll, they sent out a list of all of the documents that people would need to bring, so that when they came, they would come prepared. They would sit with those services, those services would then process their information. They do a, a, you know, a workshop format, explain what it is, how it is, and what it does. And then start bringing people to the table and start processing them right away. And once I understood that, because I didn't find that out until Friday, but I had already had the session scheduled, so that's why I went to meet the schedule. And I talked to several people and I said, you don't have to show up, but the people that I could not reach, the people I didn't know were coming anyway, so I had an opportunity to meet with them. I've had several people come into the office about it or call me, and I continue to put their name down on the list so that as we move forward, I'll be able to reach back out to them and say whatever day it is, this is the day we're gonna be conducting, or the days it's gonna be.
So, one more question. Would it be helpful then to the people, we'll say, who, if we, depending on what we find about the serv- servicer, but would it be helpful to those, to the people who are interested in doing that, if, even if you had a meeting with them to make sure they have their necessary stuff? Because you know, we hear that if we, if we're talking about a fifteen hundred dollar fee, you will want that to come. And if somebody get there that, well, we're missing this, they can't complete the process, would it be better to, if we have, you know, this is what you need to have, so when you come, they'll be fully prepared? Because again, we know that some of these people are not gonna have everything as they enter to this side of it. And it's one of the things we found out, because you always got to go back and get this, go back and get that. So that, but that might be another way of looking at workshop side for, for the community and now, but no, they haven't.
Absolutely, and she sent me a list. So I can publish the list on our website so that people know. But I hadn't moved forward with anything until we get the formal notification of this is what's included for what I'm asking. So that's really where, where I am.
And, and, and I mean, that makes sense, I get, I get that side of, I just know that when you tell people that they need all this stuff, that generally scares people because they don't know where it is, where it is, and some of these houses, they, you know, they're just stuff they never thought about until now. So that might give them the time to collect and get everything together, so when they come, it won't be a waste of their time for something.
Absolutely, we, we dealt with that with the CHIP program, where, so we, what we did was, the people that came to the session still had to come back, so we had them meet us here. We went through everything, put everything together, and then, yes, and then we created the digital version of it, and then when they came to pick them up, they came and picked up hard copies, but we still had digital copies in case there was a piece of, a document that was missing or something to that, so. Um, so yeah, I mean, once we get the uh, uh, the information back, I can meet the city manager and, you know, should, should it be something we want to do, we'll move forward, and then I'll do the same thing I do with the CHIP program. I will, you know, if I got a knock on your door, I will knock on your door.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Hill? I heard seventy-five dollars somewhere, what is that for?
That is the application fee, so there is a fee to USDA for the application.
So, we would have to pay the fifteen hundred dollars, and each person would have to pay seventy-five dollars?
That is correct, sir.
For their?
Yes, but if there's only five people to show up or five hundred people to show up, that money goes, my understanding, that money goes directly to USDA for them process. And the fifteen hundred is essentially for these people coming here for those three sessions, close their office, bring their scanners, do all of the things that they need to do to prepare our people for, um, you know, sending in their applications. The packages are about fifty pages long, but they're expediting that through this process. It, it, it is a loan, it's a grant and loan program, it's ten thousand dollars grant. And I believe it's four, up to forty thousand dollars in loan for a total of fifty thousand dollars. So if you can do what you need to do in ten thousand dollars, then it, it is a grant, and I think that there's even some threshold changes. So, you know, but again, that's why I don't want to give you any misinformation. Uh, I would rather have that information, you know, printed out and paid for. But it's just a way to service people that could not get service on the CHIP.
Do we have, I mean, not in this city, uh, and if we also cover people in this town, would this one?
This city and county, this is, USDA covers both, yes, sir.
So county people will attend, county and ten, I should say.
Yes, they tend to.
Have we reached out to the county within the partnerships that helped pay for this fifteen hundred dollars?
I had not at this point.
Alright, now that's a conversation about paying other people bills.
Well, I, you know, again, I was, I can't preclude.
No, I get it, I'm just, I'm not speaking to you directly, I'm just speaking out loud to the commission, um, because when you're a citizen of Cordill, you know, you are a citizen of Chris County. But if you're a citizen of Chris County, that doesn't necessarily make you a citizen of Cordill, not necessarily. So, it's a different tax base there. So, if we're paying, you know, and, and the people in the county are joining, so maybe uh I deal there. I'm scratching my head on the seventy-five dollar application fee, I know it's needed, or what have you, um. Yeah. Yeah, but um, I think it's a good thing, um, overall, I just, I, I, you know. Yeah, okay, but yeah, so, okay, I just want to be clear about what the seventy-five dollars for, because I, I, you know, we talked about it and went back to the fifteen. So, I mean, yeah, the fifteen hundred, so um, I'm clear now. Thank you, sir. Any further questions for Mr. Hill? Thank you for doing that work, yes, sir, it's needed. Next up, Mr. Alexander, how you doing this morning?
I'm doing real hard, you all doing?
Good morning, alright.
Okay, first report is the sales tax uh report for the month of July. We collected four hundred fifty-seven thousand seven hundred and fifty-one dollars and eleven cents um for sales tax. Then we'll move into the financial report for the month of July. As you all can see, revenue is down, which is common during this time of the year. So we're still encouraging our department heads to be conservative with their spending until, you know, revenue starts to pick back up later during the year. And we also hired a new customer service representative, Beretta King. She's been here almost a month and she's doing an excellent job. That's all I have.
Congratulations on the new hire.
Thank you.
Any questions for, for next, directly? Alright, well, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Alright. Fire.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First report will be the calls and department news. So, reporting period June twenty-fourth through July twenty-ninth. Um, we had seventy-nine total calls for service. The calls of interest are highlighted there, we had three grass or rubbish fires, we had thirty-nine calls for medical assist, five calls for motor vehicle accidents, we had one car fire, we had three structure fires, and one trash fire. Department news, um, we completed the Chris County Agribiuter Mass Casualty Event. That was held at the old middle school, seven twenty-two through seven twenty-four. There were approximately a hundred and seventy people that attended that, eleven agencies, so it was a great training event. Obviously, we can't simulate exactly what may or may not happen, but it did get us together and it did help us perform a plan if there were a mass casualty incident. So we, we enjoyed participating in that. Uh, we assisted with the recertification for Chris County teachers prior to the school system. Uh, schools starting back, that was stop the bleed, first aid, we did that on the twenty-eighth of July. Uh, we received some new air lift bags, which we've done training with, that's gonna be a great rescue and extraction tool. Um, they'll lift up to thirty-five tons, so if we're having an issue or we need to, to lift that, we have those bags now. And then, I wrote this back in July, but just a reminder about heat indexes and staying hydrated, obviously that rain the last couple of weeks is helpful there. Uh, also a reminder about Fire Safety Week, that'll be October fifth through the eleventh. The theme this year is charge into fire safety lithium ion batteries in your home. I did write three tips, and we'll talk about it one more time again next month before October, but um always use a charger provided with the device, try to avoid using cheap chargers, I know it's convenient to order things through Amazon. They're not always certified, so use the charger that comes with it. Ensure the device is fully charged and then unplug it. Ion batteries hold their charge, they don't discharge as quickly as regular batteries, so there's no need to leave them plugged in. Um, sometimes they can overheat, so I would encourage you to do that. Also, charge your battery at room temperature and avoid extreme temperatures, so if you're charging those in an outside shed, it might get hot, you might want to think about moving those places. Alright, now to goals and accomplishments. Our goals is always to provide the best possible service to the citizens and visitor of Cordill through firefighter recruitment and retention, professionalism, extensive training, quick response, effective emergency mitigation, community risk reduction programs, and community engagement. Accomplishments, um, we had a safety meeting with Cordill Gas Department, that's an annual meeting that we have with them. Chris County Fire Department was there with us, just going over safety procedures for any sort of gas leaks or gas spills. Uh, we attended the monthly safety committee meeting. Ladder one, attended a quarterly traffic incident management, the TMS meeting at the EOC. We actually, somebody may have seen the smoke, we had a eighteen wheeler fire on the interstate yesterday. Uh, part of what we train for in those meetings is how to position trucks uh for safety on the interstate. It worked really, really well, our guys positioned their trucks well, we were able to extinguish the fire. PD assisted, Chris County Sheriff assisted, kind of getting traffic off of us. We were able to call DOT, they were on scene to help us, so everything worked as it should that we go through with our training. And then next week, for three days, I'll be in Auburn, Alabama, I'll be assisting the Auburn Fire Department, they're doing a battalion chief assessment. Um, they reached out, asked for assistance, so I'm gonna go help. There'll be chiefs from Perry, Cobb County, Dothan, Alabama, Daphne, Alabama, so it's a good opportunity to help another department. Plus, I get to talk to other chiefs about issues they may be facing or, or possibly, you know, ways to improve our department. And then finally, we talked about, you know, we applied for the grant to replace some of our AEDs through the state. It was a twelve thousand dollar grant, we purchased four AEDs for eleven thousand seven hundred dollars. We did receive that reimbursement check, so that money's been put back into the budget, so it's just another opportunity to save taxpayers money. And that's all I have.
Any questions for our fire chief? Thank you, sir, safe travels.
Yes, sir.
Alright, next up is HR.
Chairman, Commissioner, good morning.
Good morning.
You have your reports in your packet. Starting out on the report for the August meeting, on June the twenty-seventh, we received the uh semi-annual annual documents for the first responder PTSD program. This period of coverage for July the first, twenty twenty-five, through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. As uh Nasanya mentioned, on July the eighth, we began conducting rounds of interviews for vacant customer service representative position in the finance department. Conditional offers extended on July the eighteenth, and Beretta King came aboard on July the twenty-ninth. On July the fifteenth, we received a retirement notice of the Water and Sewer Superintendent in Public Works. His retirement's effective, but was effective July the thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. And on July the seventeenth, we began setting internal and external applications for that position, along with a utility billing clerk in the finance department. Also, on July the seventeenth, we extended uh offers of employment to an equipment operator in cemetery parks, as long as, as long, as well as a mechanic in the fleet department. Both of those employees started on July the twenty-second. On the uh, the twenty-first, we also conducted interviews for our maintenance technician position in public works. This is to assist Wes with some of the maintenance issues we have around the city properties. And uh, he was brought on board on August the eleventh. On July the twenty-fifth, we began to set internal and external applications for the vacant assistant city manager position. Our position is still open, we're still receiving those. And then the last item for this report is, on July the twenty-eighth, began compiling information to submit the annual GMEV's retirement plan evaluation census. Uh, that report will be on August the fifteenth, it's since been completed and submitted on August the fourteenth, so GMEV has that in. As far as goals and accomplishments, I'm gonna kind of hit the middle real quick, since we were just talking about GMEVs. On September the fifteenth, we'll host a load, a lunch and learn, sorry if I said that, um, for our city employees, gonna be entitled to understanding retirement benefits. Mr. Josh Colley's gonna come down uh and present that for us. We're gonna have a couple of those before the end of the year. I'm also working right now with a representative from Nationwide Retirement Services, they administer our four fifty-seven plan, or the bird comp plan, to see if they can come in as well, uh, cause that is a benefit to help um supplement your retirement. Uh, going back up on that report, a, uh, we're, we're in the development process of creating a skills inventory to identify any gaps we have in key skills that uh, the employees have and or employees are needing for public service roles. We're continuing our weekly updates to all our job openings on our website, along with Mr. Smar is updating our, we're hiring new state's videos. And then lastly, in anticipation of some IT upgrades, we have updated our Sage HR platform on both computers in the, in our department, um, we have backed all that information up to a physical hard drive. And also moving it to a, our server, so we'll also have cloud storage in anticipation of that IT upgrade. So make sure that information is kept safely on several different platforms, and that's all I have, any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Wayne? I have a few questions, Mr. Wayne. Looking at the personnel, the, the manpower and vacancy summary. What's the vacant position in executive?
Assistant City Manager.
But we just added that, right? So... Okay, I guess you have to balance that. You might need to look at that, given where we are right now. A little bit, that's, is this up to date that we have three vacancies in finance? I know we, now it should be two. Okay, because of the recent hire. Right, okay. The one in community development, what's that vacancy?
Community Development Specialist.
The specialist position. And where are we with that position as far as?
We have, uh, stopped receiving applications, um, they have been reviewed, and Mr. Darby has, uh, selected several for reviews.
When was the timeline for, when was this position open? Like, when, when was it?
I, I don't know the exact timeline. It's been open for, uh, prior to the skin trails to dial. Looking for that position. Do you recall, Ms. Reddick?
I think this position in, uh, the planning and community development, uh, position, I think it was advertised at the same time, but I'm not sure. We have to go back and confirm that, but it's been...
When did, when did it close?
I don't know when it closed. I know Mary has in her report that she started reviewing, uh, the resumes, and I think she scheduled meetings, and her report, I think it said for October.
I do have a question, I wanna be in line here. It seems that it's not only what we're finding, that it is perception of our city. That when people turn out the questions, then some people get no answer at all. That perception became highlighted when it materialized in a very real way. Um, what are we doing to improve that particular, um, particular matter? Carefully not saying issue. Where, where improvements are, we making on that end?
I was not aware there was a matter that we need to address. Anyone who's interviewed, if they're not selected for a position, we just send out, um, letters. For positions say, customer service representative, um, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be surprised to say we had two hundred applicants for that. The vast majority of those were, um, resumes and they ended up in deed. So we do not, they were not interviewed, or they're not being currently considered for another vacant position, um, they do not get letters.
So, um, Mr. Wayne, right now, we don't, we don't finish our presentation.
Yeah, he just answered the question I was going to ask.
Okay, um... So, so I get this procedure correct, so I can be able to better inform the public. If they only submit resumes on indeed, what happens?
Even if they submit, resume through indeed, if we interview them, uh, if they do not see, if they're not, uh, considered for the position, or lots of times they will, they will, uh, apply for multiple positions. But if we interview them, and they're totally out of the running for all the positions they've applied for, we'll send them a letter. They advise of them, positions are good. For all the others that we do not send the invitation of a, of a resume, we do not send a letter.
You mean invitation of an interview?
Interview, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Apologies, I should have said that. We do not send a, as I earlier. And like right now with the, uh, customer service representative. Immediately following that, we have the utility billing clerk, some of those applicants from the fire pool are being considered for that position. And quite a few of them also applied for the position we had in the police department for a records technician. So even though they have not been, um, they were, they did not get the position in the finance department, they're still in the active applicant pool. So you would have someone who may not necessarily get a letter yet, if they're still in contention for one or two other positions.
I, I, I got what you just said, but then how would I know that? If I applied for the, one of those positions you just said, but, um, and I applied for the other, but I didn't get that position, would I necessarily know, how, what would be the?
You would not necessarily know until we complete the entire hiring process of those positions. And if you're at page, there's no more room to run for any of those positions than you would get a letter.
Now, that might be a deficit, because I would think, it, it, that, that would be something, because you, you, you would just really be wondering. And, and I guess that would be the follow-up, would be someone would be calling consistently saying, am I still there? And they would not know unless they, so that might be a... I, I would wonder, if I applied for four positions, and I didn't get the first one, didn't get an interview from that, but I'm still being considered for another one, I wouldn't necessarily know that. How, I guess my question, how would they know that?
And, and that might, that, that would definitely be a matter we need to address, because we didn't, at right now, we're not doing that. As long as they're still in the, in the considered pool, we, we're not saying, we're not sending anything, letting them know that, um, they have been excluded from one, but they're still in consideration for another. So we could, we could definitely prove that.
Yeah, 'cause I think that would be benefit to, to, to both sides. Because, you know, a person that might have, they might wanna take another job, and you wouldn't necessarily be considering them for that one if they moved on to something else, or that they know that you're still being considered for. So that might be benefit, beneficial to the person, as well as to us, because we're looking for the person.
I won't let them know if I'm not selecting them. We're gonna see too much, uh, for you, your assistant, just to say I'm sorry you wasn't selected for this position, and please obtain it.
Yes, sir. That's a very simple solution.
All right, um, thank you. Any more questions for HR? All right, thank you so much. Good morning to you. How you doing there, C?
This is our report of the FIA. We had a total of traffic cases, two hundred and forty-four. We had a total of fifty, a total of two hundred and ninety-four. We had, uh, four getty warrants ordered, uh, license extensions, uh, that it was twenty-nine. Um, our cash bonds, fines, deposits. It was thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars and eighty cents, and we just had one refund.
Any questions? Oh, sorry, goals and accomplishments.
Okay, our goal is to report accurate information for the court and the public to aim effectively adjudicated cases, process cases quickly, and maintain accurate records, to complete the court docket for the judge in a timely manner, and strive to provide accessible services, maintain integrity, and ensure accountability. And, um, all documents and courts, these decisions will turn into the states.
Any questions? Thank you so much. Ms. Burks, she all right? Good morning. How you doing?
Good morning, good morning, good morning, um, Chairman, Mr. Chairman, and fellow board commissioners. My name is Mary Darby, I am the Planning and Community Development Director. I've been here now for six weeks and is still excited. So today I am reviewing my first report during the week of activities of July fourteenth through August the fourth of twenty twenty-five. I am continuing to review our Cordial's comprehensive plan. In particular, we're looking at the community work program and updating those items, updating, removing, deleting items that have, um, already been completed. We're looking at to complete this community work plan, program update by September the thirtieth. I'll be meeting with all of the operating departments to assist with updating their documents and ensuring that the information is updated in the program as we complete our annual review. In addition, I am working on updating our zoning ordinance. I've been working with the River Valley Regional Commission, um, on that particular item and DCA. I'm hoping to have a zoning ordinance proposed map for review in ninety to a hundred and twenty days, along with a future land use map that looks at the twenty-one character areas that we have in our twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-nine comprehensive plan. I am going to be weaving in and out of accomplishments and goals as I go through this report, since there are two. In terms of the Seventh Street redevelopment plan, the corridor, I met with the regional commission. I work with Main Street. I, I met with, um, the Chamber of Commerce, the Community Advancement Director, and myself, to look at that corridor plan and to see what the purpose is, what the vision, and how we're going to invite the community to have input into the plan. So we had an effective meeting. The, um, there will be a public meeting on that corridor plan, it's scheduled for September the twenty-second, from six to seven thirty PM at the community clubhouse. And the purpose of the public meeting is to review and provide comments on the draft twenty twenty-five Street, Seventh Street Corridor Urban Redevelopment Plan. This plan describes the vision, primary land uses, development patterns, and community work programs of three distinct areas along the Seventh Street Corridor, which are the Medical Center Downtown and the South Corridor. That advertisement will go out into the paper, August twentieth.
We don't want to meet in the, again.
September the twenty-second, from six to seven thirty PM at the community clubhouse. I am working on updating the city website as it relates to the community development department. And so that is an, a continued effort. The updating deadline date is October the first, so I'll make sure I'll meet that. In terms of the community development specialist position, I have reviewed approximately seventy applications for that position. I have identified several applicants to move forward, and I'm hoping to start scheduling interviews in October of twenty twenty-five. Border Zoning Appeals Meeting, which was scheduled for August the twenty-eighth, has been, um, rescheduled the item into September twenty-fifth due to legal advertising issues. So the meeting will be, the BCA Border Zoning Appeals Meeting will be September the twenty-fifth, as opposed to Octo, August the twenty-eighth, to, um, review the cases. We are proposing a unique signage for the Gillespie-Selden District. We have a proposed outline of what that signage would look like. That will be held at the HBC meeting on August the twentieth for input and consideration. We are continuing to research and develop our GIS system here for the city, specifically housing and community development department. GIS is the Geographic Information Systems Network. We're looking at layers, digital, um, mapping, our parcels, addressing, that will help the city, the policymakers make decisions as we use the system to move the city along. I attended a I-Works virtual training. It's the permitting system that we have here with the city, so that I can have a better relationship, a working relationship with the police department. And so that went really well. And I also attended a Chris Regional Hospital meeting with the representative of Merchant McIntyre regarding, um, federal funding to, for Economic Development Administration. So that would conclude my report for July fourteenth through August the fourth. And then in terms of August the fifth through August the fifteenth, we are continuing to review the Cordial's comprehensive plan. The updates are pretty much still the same, we're working on the community work program. We're hoping to have that completed by September the thirtieth. Also, I'm very, very excited about the GIS system. So in terms of accomplishments, this is a major accomplishment. I thought that we were going to actually have to start from scratch with our GIS system, but come to find out, the Regional Valley Regional Commission has a lot of ma, um, layers and attributes, and also Chris County that we can partner into, but we just have to get the license, the edury license. And so I've been approved to do that, and it is in our budget. So that is super huge for me. So the, the Seventh Street Corridor accomplishments, that's also a huge document that's moving forward, because it's looking at slide, um, um, looking at slum, blight, and the revitalization of the Seventh Street Corridor between Seventh Street, First, Twenty-Eighth Street, avenues, and between Fifth and Eighth Street is the study area. So that's what we look at in terms of revitalization of that neighborhood. I attended a meeting with Mike Beatty, a representative of the Smith Douglas Homes, to consider a partnership with the city for a grant. And the purpose of the meeting was to construct rural workforce development housing here in the city in a R point seven-five S zoning district. The next step out of that meeting is that we're looking to identify ten to fifteen acres of land where such development could occur. We're updating our zoning applications, which are housed on our website, the community development website. And we're trying to make those more user-friendly and just update the process overall. And... I attended various other meetings to make all this happen. And that will conclude my report. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Darby?
Another question for the Congresswoman.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Darby was well received by the Coalition Association at the banquet. They run her through the community, and she has so many plans for GSI, and we thank you for coming in to our historic district.
Thank you. It was great, it was great learning about the history of Gillespie-Selden, it was an honor actually. Any other questions, comments, or concerns?
Yes, the August twentieth meeting, what time is it?
Six PM.
Okay.
Here, in this courtroom.
That's right. It was hard, uh, following you, and then I realized I had the wrong report.
Okay.
I had all this script, I was like, I'm trying to follow, but that's what happens when, you know, you all don't have the opportunity to give reports at certain meetings.
And I was jumping around a little bit.
I'm like, oh, like... But then it was like, oh, okay, I, he was on one and I was on the other, uh, but it makes sense, so I appreciate that. All right, any other questions for Ms. Darby?
I have one question. What time is your meeting on September twenty-second?
On September twenty-second, from six to seven thirty PM at the community clubhouse. There will be, um, a presentation made as well as billboards, and we'll have resource tables out there as well to help the citizens understand the plan and how we're moving forward.
I'd just like to comment that you've accomplished a lot and reviewed a lot in just a short period of time, and I appreciate your efforts, uh, in hitting the ground running like you have. And I've enjoyed, um, spending a little time with you, riding around and showing you the community. And that's been a real pleasure, and look forward to continue to help you in any way possible.
Thank you very much, and I did skip over that in my report, I apologize. But thank you so much for the tour of all the districts. And it's because of that tour, I'm able to jump in and see what's needed and to conduct that SWOT analysis of the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats of the city. So thank you very much, you got your inspiration in that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Have a go. I, I do have one other question, Ms. Darby. Maybe a comment at some point, um, down the line. Let us know if you think equity analysis would be critical in the work you're doing. Because I think that may be something that would be beneficial as we, especially with limited funds. And what I'm anticipating with the federal government and state government crunching down our funds or, you know, restricting funds. For some things, um when we make decisions, I'd rather decisions be made. On objective reports, you know, than subjective because everybody have their, you know. Subjective opinions, right? But I think an equity analysis may help guide us a little bit better.
And may I ask for you to sound just a little bit on what an equity analysis is?
Yes, it is when you look at the resources and funds and where they have historically been put in what areas. Or where have you, whether we're up to par in one area versus another area, one community versus another community. Where has the money been going over time?
So, I'm sorry, I don't know if I need to be at the podium or not. But that is something that I can't even tell, but it has to go through our community work program, so we'll.
Identify the projects that have been placed there by the citizens and the board and then identify which district those projects in. And then calculate the responsible party as well as the amounts that's been estimated for those projects. Okay?
Good morning, everybody. Chief had an appointment this morning, so once again, get my happy face. Uh since we have three divisions to cover and and a couple reports each, I'm gonna hit the highlights and any specific concerns that were brought up in yesterday's department head meeting. If I miss anything, feel free to stop me and I'll cover it the best I can um with any questions you have. I'm gonna start with animal control. Um the stats there, as you noticed, we took in a hundred and sixty-six animals between the period of June twenty-fourth and and July twenty-eighth. So the numbers were up significantly for that time period. Which often happens in the summertime, unfortunately, the numbers of pickups go up, but the number of adoptions go down. And uh the only thing we can relate is the children out of school, uh families are doing stuff during the summertime, they're not really thinking about adopting animals. So we hope to have a pickup here shortly now school has has started again. Even though we did have uh forty-eight adoption or forty-four rescues in that time, which is which is good. Um we would just wish it's higher with the uptake of a hundred and sixty-six animals, that the numbers don't match there, so. We'd like to thank our um constant donors, uh the probation office, Tractor Supply and the public. For all the food and supplies that they send us, we loaded six boxes that came from Chewy into the truck just the other day. From uh from the public that just sends us boxes from Chewy and and other websites with donations. Probation's very good because I don't know if you know, but they give credit for their community service hours if they, you know, donate. Food and supplies to the animal shelter and then Tractor Supply has always been a big help with us. We we go there and get pallets at a time of food where we we don't have enough trucks for the food amount of food they're giving us. So we really appreciate that, that helps the numbers keep them the 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 cost low there at the animal shelter. Uh we put new signs up so people can find the animal shelter a little easier. We've got one big one right there at the animal shelter by, you know, on the fence by the water treatment plant. Um they were designed and they look very good, we have also, we have one at the corner of Fifteenth Street and Seventh Avenue. Directing them which way to turn on to go down to the animal shelter and they look very good where they've been placed and we. Appreciate uh Public Works helping us get those signs put up. We're also working on, it's not in your report right now, but this is a a recent development, we're working on developing our vicious dog board. We've had an uptake in bite cases where owners are not wanting to sign over the the animals. And to do the the system properly, we have to put them in front of a board to deem their dog vicious. So we will be posting something shortly, asking for volunteers for that board, we need to make sure we do everything legal and correct and we're working on that process now. But that is a process that we're putting in and we're working with the court system to uh expedite these cases. So they're not sitting around and we're not holding dogs, right now we have two dogs, I think three dogs in the shelter that are. We we deem vicious that we can't put any other animals in with, we can't adopt, we can't rescue. Uh and we're having to hold them until these court cases are going through because the owners refusing to sign them over to us. So uh we're trying to fix that problem through the vicious dog board. So look out for that that notification. And that's the statistic, uh if there's any que- no question about that, I'll move on to goals. Okay, goals and conference, uh as I said before, the adoptions are low, so uh once summer ends, we hope that to to increase. We have several people willing to volunteer out there, uh we're looking into the proper paperwork. For the legality, the liability that so so the city don't take on any of the liability or anything like that, so we're just working on developing that paperwork. But we do have several people willing to step in and help us out there, which is a very good thing. Um I mentioned the new signs already. We're doing our best to educate the public on the conditions of what we're, what is expected when you have a dog. Uh there are certain ordinances and and certain rules that apply. Uh as far as food, shelter, how they can be chained, how long the chain has to be and stuff like that, and we're constantly trying to educate the public on those. Uh we've had to order new uh more microchips, they've been a very popular thing. That people could show up and get their dogs chipped and their cats chipped at the animal shelter, so. We we charge a minimal fee for that, just just enough, just a little bit more than what it cost us to do. Uh but it's been very popular, it helps us when when we send uh dogs out for adoptions and stuff like that, if they're picked up again, we immediately know who's responsible for that that animal. Any questions about goals and accomplishments for animal control? More stats?
No, sir.
I'll move on to codes at this point then. This is for the same uh period, June twenty-fourth, July twenty-eighth. If you notice down there, our weed and junk uh cases are up at sixty-one. We've made a very big push towards that because naturally in summer, the number of uh branches go up, you know. People getting out, working in the lawn and and we're still, once again, educating people on the size of the piles they can have and where they put the piles to be picked up and and stuff like that, so. Just because it says sixty-one cases doesn't mean sixty-one people are getting citations or anything, that just means we've addressed them. We've talked to them about how to get a proper remove and and where it should be. But we do open a case to track our numbers and track who we're talking to and stuff like that, so. They're they are increasing because we put a major focus on that throughout the the summertime. Um I think there was a specific question about the inspections we're doing at the Christian Homes site. We're we're deeming those residential inspections, so that's we were handling in-house, which would include the plumbing, the electrical. Naturally, the CO inspections we're doing, we're working close with the Fire Department with them doing their inspections. We're working very close with the site engineer and he's, what I've been told, he's holding up the standards that you would find. In four and five story buildings for these two-story buildings, so he's got a very high standard that he is not budging on. Making them hold that standard and our inspectors are working closely with that to make sure they use the most, the safest and most efficient um residences that we've got growing up out there. So does that address any other concerns that might have been had? Because I think it was addressed in the department head meeting that someone had some questions about. Just wanna make sure we cover that. So as you as you probably know, we stopped doing commercial inspections for places like when Speedway was coming up. Like the um um other commercial entities because that was outside our purview of inspection, but these are residential communities, so we're still handling those in-house. We had multiple blighted property cases in the court. The court gave them a little bit more time to address those properties, so they'll be coming back around, I think, I think it was sixty days. That we'll we will address them again, um but we continue to work on blighted cases. Any questions about this stats, Mr. Darby?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay, on the goals and um accomplishments. Number one there, we worked with Public Works, we we identified a site that we cleaned up once uh with the help of Public Works because we can't find any. Evidence of who is dumping stuff there and I'm not gonna mention the site naturally, but uh we've identified it as a repeat site that people have gone to, so we've worked with Public Works. We have installed cameras in that site, so if anybody were to do it any further. We're gonna be able to get tag numbers, vehicle descriptions and stuff like that and hold that person accountable because it is a site that is getting dumped quite a bit. We're not just talking about one or two pieces, we're talking about multiple piles. Uh we believe it to be a landlord that is cleaning out residences and using that spot as his private um garbage pile. So hopefully that'll uh produce some results here shortly and we can hold that person accountable and stop that problem. Um officer, uh code officer New and Hersher, they're intended to go to a training class on eight twenty-eight, we're also looking at the next. Uh G A C E conference, uh sending a few people to that one, I don't know the date specifically on that one, but we're actually looking at that as well to keep these guys up to train. We are currently working on getting the officers that we have, the code officers that we have that aren't certified in inspections. We are currently have the materials and stuff like that and they're studying for those tests, so. Hopefully that won't take too much longer before we have everybody at the same level. Right now they're working to partner with the ones that are certified to do the inspections, to learn how to do it. They just can't sign off on them right now until they get those actual certifications, so we're working towards that. We had several demolition permits approved. And once again, as I addressed in the stats, we're meeting with people constantly about how to to get rid of their their um. Their lawn debris, I would like to remind people now that the the issue has come up recently. Express Disposal still picks up appliances two each per week and they will pick up um small furniture two each per week. That that issue had come up and we addressed it when it did, so. But I'd just like to remind people, they still do that services as far as um debris piles go, so technically on the day you get picked picked up, you could have a garbage can. A pile of debris, two appliances and two pieces of furniture and all that will get picked up the same day, so. Any questions about goals and accomplishments, codes?
Number three, can you clarify um about streets or avenues?
East Ninth would be Avenue, East Fifth would be Avenue and Southeast would be a street.
And then in regards to express disposal, I'm glad you made it clear because I've said before. That it's only if a resident, if they have service with express disposal because from time to time we get calls. Or complaints saying, you know, our place is here, it's a vacant lot, they don't have service, so that's why it's not picked up.
In that situation, they can still contact Express Disposal, they will just have to pay for the removal in that in that situation if they're clearing off a vacant lot that don't have service. But it's still, it still can be done, it it's just added cost to them. So if um there's one thing I wanted to bring up, it's the pending jobs on the last page, um a question was brought up about Pizza Hut. I don't know, I can't tell you exactly how far we are in the process, but what we're working on is Pizza Hut is supposed to be moving from their current location to the location of Sonic. Uh and what I've been told is they're gonna create like a drive-through pizza area to where people can drive through to pick up their pizza. I don't know if they're gonna have sit-down available or not, I don't think we're that far into it, but right now they're taking the initial steps to start taking over the Sonic building. So um and then there's an issue that we are addressing with Speedway. If you haven't noticed, Speedway's diesel fuel is significantly cheaper than anybody in this area, and when I say significantly, I'm talking sixty to seventy cents cheaper per gallon. This is causing a backup on Greer and on Eighth Avenue. The other night, I I've I've been monitoring it um at night, it usually starts happening between five thirty, six P M and it goes on until the truckers. Go to bed or whatever happens, but I've been monitoring it three times now, I've had to go head-on with tractor trailer in my lane. Because they turn on to Eighth Avenue and realize they don't have the space, so they just go ahead and and go into the opposite lane. And I've had to go around them, that's happened three times. The other night I went through there at about eight thirty at night and I took video recording, so if anybody wants to see it, I have it. Greer was completely shut down. They had Eighth Avenue completely blocked, both lanes, no traffic was moving westbound on Eighth Avenue, no one could come off the exit of seventy-five. Uh they had trucks back down seventy-five, or back down the exit ramp at seventy-five, so they essentially set down the exit ramp at the one oh two. For any vehicles to come off, it was horrible. I called the patrol commander, had him go over there and tell them, they ain't gotta go home, but you can't stay in the middle of the road like this. So we went to Speedway, we had a discussion with them. They said they were trying to address it, but we're also addressing ourselves, we we met with uh our C A Public Works, we're gonna have some signs installed on Greer. That says tractor trailers cannot stop and cannot park on that section of road and it will be police enforced because it's now. The the way the way they had it jumbled up the other night, if someone were to try to pull out and another tractor trailer was coming out of Love's, we could have had a fatality there. It's it's getting really bad and and it's not stopping and the indication we got from Speedway is the price is not gonna change anytime soon. So we we were addressing it on our end to address the truckers. Because it is a logistical nightmare out there after five P M, so. So are there any questions about um codes? Okay, we'll move on to the Police Department. Once again, same reporting period, June twenty-fourth to July twenty-eighth. Part one crimes, we got forty-three, um thirty-three large names, eight eight entering auto. To jump off of that one, we actually caught one of the guys that was responsible for entering autos. He tried to flee from officer, but we had a good description, we actually ran him down, caught him. This one was an adult, uh he he was not a juvenile and so he's being dealt with the court only through the courts. In charge of multiple entering autos, he actually had possession of some of the items that he had taken, so it's a. It's a solid case and and it's good work on the officers to keep a lookout for that guy and and running down when he when he fled. Um department news. To update this, it said we had one applicant, we now have three applicants for patrol, we have opened up the positions for animal control, we had one. Animal control officer uh finish out her two weeks' notice as of Friday. And so we've opened up that spot, we've also got three applications already for that, I think we just opened that on Friday, so that that's a good sign, because usually animal control. Is a very difficult position to fill because it takes a certain kind of person to do it. As far as the patrol applications go, right now we we've got a good problem to have, we're getting more applications uh for patrol than we have spots. And we like that position to be in, uh therefore we've opened up a corporal's position. Um but we have several corporal positions open and hopefully shortly here in the future we'll be doing some promotions. We put them into corporal, we opened up more spots at the bottom. Unfortunately with us, getting a officer ready for the road is a slow go process because the academy is now expanded to twenty weeks. And we are working with Jipstick to ask them to start staggering academies. Because right now we basically gotta wait twenty weeks and then start another academy, so we've got twenty weeks and then naturally we have a twelve-week process. Of F T O after that, so we're talking from the day they go to the academy to the time they're alone on the road, you're talking seven or eight months. Which is a long turnaround, if they were to rotate the academies and start academy one month, maybe a month and a half later start another one and keep them like that. Um we've still got the two in the academy right now, we we just hired one, which I was gonna talk to you next, Gregory Kraft started with us about a week and a half, two weeks ago. He's going to the next academy, but that next academy only opens in January. So we're waiting till January to send any other people. So that kinda hurts us, we're, yeah, we have the applications and we can hire the people, but then. We have to wait on the academy to to get them in there and and then run them for twenty weeks. So we are working on that process. As I said, the two got, the the two cadets that are in academy now are in their fifth week. Um we've also hired an F D C, which is the records technician that we spoke about, that we spoke about earlier. Uh that is Sabrina Mayo, she started with us, I believe, last week. And so far what I've heard is she's doing a a jam-up job. So uh so the good thing is to sum all that up, we're getting applications and then we're putting people to work, which is a good thing. Next part is the, I I'm sure everybody knows the child I D safety card, we've talked about it quite a few. It's been a very big success, we attended the back-to-school bash where I think we took over a hundred photos just that day to build cards with. Uh so we've done several hundred of these um these I D cards. After a brief conversation with Commissioner Owens, we've decided to expand it and we're. After a brief conversation with Commissioner Owens, we've decided to expand it and we're developing it now to, uh, pre-teens and teenagers that don't necessarily wanna be called a child, you know? Um, but they're, they're not old enough to get a state-issued I D or something like that, so we wanna, we wanna develop something that looks a little more mature, uh, to attract the younger people probably between the ages of twelve and sixteen, so they can come in and get an I D themselves without having, uh, Legos and trail the colors on their I D. That, that's in, that's in development. Um, as I stated before, we went to the Back to School Bash, which was a big success. Any questions on the stats for the police department? I know I just breezed through a little bit.
No, sir.
Okay, the goals and accomplishments, yes, it's, it's more up to date than the number of, uh, applicants that we have. Um, so we will be moving forward that process. Now, we've already interviewed one, I've got two more to set up interviews with. Uh, one is actually moving here from Missouri, he's with his family, so we're working around his schedule, getting him over here and getting him in. Um, we have the, the new speed limit sign we, we have is, is on Fifteenth Avenue, which that gives us a lot of data speakers and information that we, we can use to, uh, properly patrol those areas. And then I'll jump down to the bottom one. Oh, we, we are working on the, the upcoming National Faith and Blue Weekend, which we do every year. We are starting to develop, um, the ideas for that. And then finally down here, we, uh, we have promoted Tremiska Jones, if you, if you know Tremiska, she has been promoted to State Certification Clerk. Um, just to clear up some, I, I heard there was a question, that position, State Certification Clerk, was not created. All it was, we had an admin clerk position that was open that we renamed to State Certification Clerk. So we did not, we did not add any new positions, all we did was fill one that's been vacant. It was, it was designed to be a investigative clerk, but we found we could fill that role with Tremiska, she's one of them doing that. She can both work investigation and admin at the same time, so we never filled that, that position. And now we're using it to become, to, to have that State Certification Clerk, which is gonna advance us towards our state certification, uh, which is a good thing. And I think Tremiska will do a jam-up job. I'll miss her in the position she is, because I, I don't even know her a lot, you know, the stuff's done, but we'll train someone up. Um, Tremiska will do, got a good job training them up to, to fill that role for her. Um, and that's it for the goals and accomplishments, any questions, concerns for the police department?
All right, just one question.
Just one.
With, um, we had a lot of, um, people trying to get in cars. And a lot of our residents have, um, ring cameras and other security things around their homes. Um, and when they check and see that something has gone on and, and giving that information to the police department, is that something that they would just need to? How, how, how would you all handle that information, getting that information? Because in some cases, in a particularly one, I know they can't necessarily identify the person per se, but, uh, through those cameras that we noticed that there was doing, that it was something going off throughout the neighborhood. So how would they get that information?
They would just contact the police department, we'll put them in, in touch with the investigator that's over. Because as we know, a lot of times, entering autos or attempted entering autos happen in sections. There's always a full camera stunt asking people if they have ring cameras and stuff like that. But if, if by chance you have a ring camera that you see something, it, it may not affect your property, but you see a man at three o'clock in the morning crossing your property in all dark clothing and stuff like that, contact us anyway, because it may turn out to be the man just was walking down the street. It could be turned out that all your neighbors around you got hit and he, and he crossed over your yard to get to him. So we would put them in touch and that investigator would go out to their house and either help them download it however they can do it or record it on one of our cameras itself. And that way we can add it to the case file. Like I said, the guy we caught earlier was a lot to do on the description, um, because one thing we've noticed is people breaking into cars at three or four o'clock in the morning are still wearing the same clothes at eight, nine o'clock in the morning when the light comes out and people can see them. So we get those descriptions out pretty quick to the patrol officers and everybody that's out roaming around to keep a lookout for those descriptions. So it's gonna help us no matter whether your property is affected or not. Any help we can get, we, we appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Any questions, other questions?
Another question, but a comment, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
On the child I D card program, there is a local church and our chief trying to set up where they will come to the church, this church has a large group of children, just, so they're gonna take a program to the church on a Thursday night. And I think that's a good idea, because some other churches might have to include this. Um, they're gonna be going into your church and they, and doing the I D testing, that's a good idea.
Yeah, I, I forgot to mention that, because I, I forgot we were gonna do that. And most likely how that'll happen is we'll go into the church after they, they're, they're finished and we'll take all the children's pictures, get all their information, come back, we'll print them all out, probably redeliver them to that church the next Sunday to, for distribution, so everybody don't have to come down to the P D to pick them up. It'd just be easier for us to go there, come do our thing and bring them back. So, but we are, we, we welcome that with any church, uh, that wants to do that. Any organization that wants to do it that involves the church, some of these daycares, we got a new daycare opening up. If they've got parents that are interested, all we have to do is go to the daycare. We, we're not gonna bring the printer and stuff, but we can get the camera and get the information and, and work with, uh, those organizations as well. So that doesn't apply just to churches, that's any organization that wants to do.
Thank you. Any other questions? I do have a question, um, as far as, you know, my question wasn't sent in for the chief, um, but maybe you or the city manager know, is what do we pay for the crossing guards in our budget? How much is that?
I, I believe it's twenty dollars a day.
No, I mean, like generally per year, what's that allocation specifically?
I don't know, but I can get that information, what we pay them, but what I will say is right now, because we don't have in the budget one school crossing guard. And, uh, that is at the primary school.
No, the only one we have is at Frontis Road, at the high school, Frontis Road, twenty-fourth.
Okay, Frontis Road.
That's Miss Willie May Kraft.
Okay, right, okay, Miss Kraft, and she is out on medical leave. And so, uh, right now we're not paying anything for a school re, uh, school crossing guard. But, um, um, we have officers who are going out there.
When, when needed, yes.
Right, to help with traffic.
Uh, the good thing is we haven't had any complaints in that area, which is a good thing, because we thought we were gonna be flooded, because Willie May's been out there for thirteen years straight and, uh, but we're, we're, we're available, we need to go out there if there is.
Well, we did have complaints.
We've had many complaints.
I had a conversation with the chief.
Okay.
And I told him that day that we need to send officers out there or available personnel in the mornings and afternoons.
Okay.
Yes, I had that discussion with him and so we should have, um, you know, personnel out there. But as far as Miss Kraft, she's on medical leave, so we don't have school crossing guard.
All right, thank you. Um, other question, this crime statistics for six years, is this information accurate?
Yes, uh, as far as, I've been made aware you pulled those off the, off the website that, that Miss knows.
It appears to me, as the conversation goes, that crime has been increasing, decreasing several, you know, categories in that the picture that some people wanna paint that the crime has got ridiculous. Um, it just doesn't spur out in actual numbers. Um, they've been consistent in, in some places they have increased and some places they have decreased. Um, considerably so. Um, Commissioner Owens, so you got people talking about how bad it is and crime has escalated. That doesn't bear with the numbers that I'm leaking at right now. Um, still bad, I won't say that. I'm not saying that we still have work to do, but this is a good thing to look at where we are. What crime has increased, what crime has decreased. Um, so thank you, you all, for providing that. Uh, I have another question, maybe this question for the city manager personnel. Um, a personnel question, and it's not necessarily who, but it's, have we made any progress into finding out who leaked the email from the police chief? Um, when we talked about the school, um, the police department policy on what they do with the school. Um, that email was leaked on Facebook, that memo, internal memo was leaked on Facebook, um.
It took mine maybe what, a year or so ago?
Less than a year ago, but yes.
No, I don't think, um, as far as I know, I don't think whoever placed that memo out there was identified.
I haven't heard you update on that one.
Okay, all right. Do you have any other questions? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good morning. Good morning, how you doing?
Beginning with our cemeteries and parks department, routine grass maintenance is ongoing. Cemeteries and parks has completed ninety-two customer-reported and routine maintenance reporters. Next we have our gas department, the annual valve maintenance is complete. The Georgia Public Service Commission is scheduled to be here August twenty-fifth through August twenty-eighth and September fifteenth and September sixteenth to perform inspections. Annual regulator release valve inspections are scheduled to start in August. Annual cathodic protection survey is expected to begin August, this month and September. Um, and also the annual leak survey is scheduled to begin this month. The gas department has completed forty-six customer-reported and routine maintenance reporters. Next we have our street department, the department has worked on ditch maintenance, storm drain maintenance, alley repair, tower removal and driveway repair. The street department has completed forty-one customer-reported and routine maintenance reporters. And also our water department has completed fifty-five customer-reported and routine maintenance reporters from four July. And that's all I have for the commission report, any questions?
Any questions?
So next we have our, um, goal with our accomplishments update. Um, it's coming from goal number six, and so I have Michael Michon with E S G. He's overseeing our water department and he's gonna provide an update on the offer project.
Good morning, Jerry, Mitch.
Good morning.
Uh, I received an update from the engineer leading up the offer project yesterday. Phase one is nearing completion, they've got to crowd in some services and then finish preparing some street tests. They're hoping to finish that this week, weather permitting. As far as phase two goes, they began this week on Thirteenth Avenue, cleaning and hammering the lines this season and important repairs that need to be done. And we will get an update as scheduled as they continue to move forward on that. So that's all I've got for you at this time.
Any questions? I do have a question, we just had a, a word, me and you, a word with each other the other day.
Which one?
Oh, yeah.
Which one? I probably guessed like fifteen in the last couple of weeks since I've been up here.
We're talking about a specific one, she alludes another moment.
Let's see, uh, uh, Third Street at Twenty and a Half Alley. And I think that's the one we'll call in the morning.
Yes, sir, the locations were put in for that, they will be legal within three days and we'll get on it. Basically as soon as the locations are ready. Uh, it was one smaller line, not necessarily even an emergency, uh, so we can wait on the locations to come in and then we'll get it repaired.
Perfect, awesome, thank you. All right, all right, that concludes, thank you. Any, any questions?
Apologize, any questions?
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Morning, honorable chairman, members of the city commission, uh, city manager Reddick. Uh, I, I'll try to be respectful of your time this morning and make this as, uh, brief as possible. By way of my August fifth report, uh, we did attend the Back to School Bash. There were over seven hundred young people that were, uh, that were served and their families at the Back to School Bash. And we carried the twelve-minute concert, this kind of high school band. They call them the best band in the land for a reason. They proved that, we carried that live to your social media platform and it receives, um, uh, some great, uh, comments and, and a lot of interaction. So we were proud to be able to do that at the Back to School Bash. Uh, also in my report of August fifth, I pointed out different pieces of content. The news outlets, media outlets, uh, not only locally, but around the state, making down to Albany. Uh, tend to sometimes take a look at our social media platforms and our website and they pull out different aspects of those things to use as news content. Uh, they pulled out police department child I D photos, for instance, and they used that at some point. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you know, but they pulled out the nonprofit scaling and strategy workshop and they used that. And so it's good to see that, uh, news agencies are watching us and that they are pulling out, uh, pieces of content to, uh, feature. Uh, at the department head meeting, uh, prior to the August fifth, and we talked about it some more yesterday, uh, October first is going to be the launch date for your new website. We're proud of that, we're proud of what we've been able to accomplish as a team. We continue to work on different, uh, uh, sections of the website, getting it ready to go. Worked with Miss Debbie and, uh, the U C and T yesterday and bringing that up to where it needs to be. Fixed some, uh, different, uh, pieces of content there. And so we're ready to go, that website is going to live on a dot gov. And so we'll be moving the website, when it is, uh, released, October first, it'll go to a dot gov platform. We'll be receiving the sign-off sheet from Granicus probably about second week September. And then we'll hook up Bobby and Brett, uh, with, uh, Granicus to do what it is they do to get that, uh, moved over. And we're looking forward, uh, we'll start a campaign, once we get that, uh, sign-off sheet, uh, signed and taken care of, we'll start a campaign letting people know about the launch of your website. Uh, that is basically my, uh, August fifth report. By way of our goals and accomplishments, back on July twenty-second, I had a good meeting for about an hour, hour and a half with our city manager, uh, to discuss our vision moving forward. Uh, in the last quarter twenty-five and first quarter twenty-six, as far as goals and accomplishments concerned for the social media marketing department. Before you, uh, is a, uh, a list of goals that we are endeavoring to do as we go into the last quarter and the first quarter. These goals are geared to increase citizen information and, uh, communication. And the success of these goals is going to hinge on cooperation, both within the city structure and the community itself. I can tell you that, uh, your social media following has grown to over thirty-five hundred, uh, which is, uh, which is very good in my, uh, limited opinion. And, uh, we continue to try to serve this commission, this city, uh, this citizen uh, with positive and update transparent information. With that, honorable chairman, that is my report. And I thank you for your time and we'll try to answer any questions should this honorable body have.
Any questions for Mrs. Smol? As far as the goals that you have here, you, you did relay that there for the last quarter of this year, correct?
I'd like to take a look at those for the last quarter of this year and then moving into, uh, first quarter of next year. Keeping in mind, some of these things we already do. Some of these things as far as monthly content themes, or for instance, uh, public works, public safety, rest, cancer, the way. Some of these things, uh, we do, but we would like to try to expand on.
Right, okay. All right, and I have no other questions, thank you for, for conveying this to us. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, honorable chairman, y'all have a good day.
All right, you too. Miss Devon, U C and T? Ms. Debbie, the UCNT?
On my July twenty-ninth report, uh, for the first time, and as long as I can remember in the last several years, we actually treated less wastewater than we pumped drinking water. Of course, you know July was a hot and dry month, we only got like three point seven inches of rain the whole month. And it was just, it was just brain hot. But we also got the results of the wet test, that's the whole effluent toxicity test that we do once a year. It's required by EPD, we passed both tests. And I sent in the groundwater use permit material, and EPD couldn't find it. So, a month later, they emailed me and said, where is it? So I made them respond this time that they got it. So anyway, they've had it now, and I haven't heard a word from them. Uh, American Tank Company was painting the exterior of Pinia Ground Storage Tank. They're finished now, it looks really good. But, um, well levels dropped an average of five feet in July, which is not real good. And then for August, since we had low flow in July, we got a lot of maintenance done. But lightning struck the flow meter at Rock House Road, which, that's the new town well, it burned it up. But we had a spare, we got it in, and they came down and calibrated it, so everything's running good. We'll have a new one installed later this year when they come to calibrate all the meters. Uh, like I said, the exterior paint job on the Pinia Ground Storage Tank's complete, looked really good. And our, this is terrible, our SCADA telem- telemetry system is obsolete, it's failing. And we started calling vendors to come in and look and see what we need to do to get a system in here that is current. This one is fifteen years old, and in the last month or two, it's just gone crazy. But that's what controls the wells running and the tank levels. If it doesn't send the right signal, then say Highway ninety well comes on, and it overflows this elevated tank at Pinia. And it just overflows until it, somebody gets a message that something's wrong, we have to go out there and manually reset it. So we've lost a lot of water that way. And then it can tell it not to come on at all, and the tank happened to go dry, that hasn't happened, but it has overflowed a lot. But anyway, we've got to replace the system, and I do not know what it's gonna cost, but we're working on getting quotes right now. It's just something that's got to be done. Anyway, we had the bearings and seals replaced on trickle filter number two. Trickle filter number one's due, and it's gonna be done sometime in the next couple of weeks. And well levels dropped an average of eight feet more from July to August, which isn't good at all. But we got eight to ten inches of rain first week of August. So, maybe some of the farmers cut off their pivots, and maybe they won't drop anymore this year, since, you know, the growing season's almost over. Well, that's about it, unless y'all have some questions?
Any questions from Ms. Debbie?
Just one, do you have a repair for that system in your budget for the upcoming year?
For the SCADA? No, this is something, I mean, I wrote that budget back in January.
So this is something new?
This is something that's occurred in the last couple of months, it started slow, but now it's really bad. And no, I did not put it in there, it's in my five-year plan. But, um, no, I don't have it in there. But there is something in the splotch that we can trade out, the transfer switch, we can't do that?
Once the voters vote on splotch, you cannot add anything to it.
I always wanna take one away and trade. Oh, well, it didn't hurt to ask. But anyway, it's something we're gonna look at, we're gonna get some prices. We got a man coming tomorrow morning, and we've already seen two others, so we're just waiting on quotes. Sorry, I mean, stuff happens.
That's right, that's right, it's your fault.
Well, anything with this SCADA stuff, it's just, you know, it's obsolete, probably after you buy it.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
But fifteen years old, they can't do anything with it. Alright, y'all have a good day.
Alright, you too, thank you. Alright, IT, how you doing?
Well, I have a hundred and eighty-two pages here, but, but I'll focus on two, if that's okay.
Thank you.
So the one thing that I always wanna start out with, which is gonna continue to be a process of improvement for us, is this Windows eleven upgrade and update. And, and mixed in with that is some computer replacement. And we do appreciate the departments working with us to have a smooth transition of data from older equipment to the newer equipment. And we are holding on to the older equipment for a while, just to make sure all the data transfers properly. You might recall your last meeting, you approved, I think it was fifty-three items for disposition for IT. And we'll be coming back to you when we're comfortable with disposing of those items and with new data remediation. Bobby can now remote access, maintain and support all of the computer devices, which is a great, which is a big deal. And he can also do ticketing, create tickets, and he is backed up by Interdev's support team. So they can also remote access and maintain and support all of the server, the servers and computers and devices. Mentioning the SCADA, uh, you know, I've been out there, I've seen it, but one of the things that's important for everyone is their internet connectivity. And we, we've struggled with that, getting that one gig connection up to the one gig speed it's supposed to be at. And we fortunately had our city manager, Ms. Angela, contacted, and we now have a schedule where Tuesday this week, upgraded equipment should go at one location, Wednesday, another location, which will bring us our upgraded, completed one gig circuit on Thursday, which is a great, I mean, it affects, it affects a lot of our operations, which is very important to us. Uh, another item is, uh, we're working on doing a true-up of our Microsoft licensing, which is not really a big issue, we just wanna be as active as possible. I am so happy about the GIS, that's one of my favorite subjects, because GIS to me is the face of information technology. It gives you all the information you can visually see, because everything is location-based. You can do heat maps, you can, you can provide just all kinds of community information to help you make decisions, and that's, that's important. Rick and I will be working on a transition for the dot gov domain. We're not gonna force it, we're gonna make it, we're gonna test it behind the scenes. We're gonna make the dot gov email addresses a, a secondary address. We're gonna have a test team who work together to make sure it works properly. And of course, when the website rolls out, uh, it will be a dot gov domain website. The Center for, uh, Cybersecurity Infrastructure and Security Agency recommends you maintain your own domain for security purposes, and any other social media, retain it, protect it, because it could be used in a fair way. Um, and that's pretty much it for now. Are there any questions or anything you want to talk about?
Any questions? Alright, well, thank you for what you do. Yes, sir. Alright, well, that concludes our department head's report. Alright, with that, we're moving to our specific agenda items. Item number one, uh, considering approval from its, uh, two-well Sunday, uh, black dusters. It was, um, reviewed and recommended on July fourth by the chief, police chief specifically. Do we have a motion in the second to consider and approve this?
Sir.
It's been properly moved in second that we consider and approve this, um, event, um, permit, alright, any discussion? Alright, seeing no, shall proceed to vote, Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepard?
Yes.
Commissioner Rainey?
Yes.
Alright, motion carries, it is approved. Alright, agenda item number two, consider and approve resolution authorizing expenditures of fifteen hundred dollars for the Chris County Community Council, do we have a motion and a second for agenda item number two? It's properly moved in second and second, that we consider and approve this, uh, agenda item number two. Alright, any discussion? Alright, um.
You want me to elaborate?
Yes, I was asking who, who it was, yes.
It is, it is there.
Okay, Commissioner, okay.
Okay, my request at the top of the monitor, we have emergencies on the weekends, holidays, and I need like emergency fixmen, or some assistance, they have no funds at this time. And in order to place some of these people who, who took our place, out of homes, got burned out, we don't have anywhere to set, we don't have a, a home, or nowhere we can send people to Cordial. So these are gonna be emergency funds for the whole city of Cordial, not just one, for anyone who misplaced or disposed, and they try to help, that's how I want the council here in Cordial, for after hours of holidays or weekends.
When you say Monica, Monica?
Monica, um.
Robinson?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay, we have three Monicas. That, no, it's fine. I'll keep up sometime.
That's alright, you don't get a month if you write.
That's right, that's right, uh, okay, alright, um. So, um, thank you, Commissioner Shepard, for elaborating on that. Um, I would say, I looked at some of the balances of the discretionary funds. You all still have money, um, so you might wanna figure out which other ways to use that money. My specific thing, invoices are starting to come in, um, or what have you. I don't know what amount of money I have left, but you know, we're, at some point, we're gonna earn a new budget. So, um, if there's community things, um, that you all can think of, and you know, can use your funds towards, that may be, I know one thing also that can use some, um, help is, um, that's why I was confused, because the same that Doug has as well. Um, they can use some funding there as well, him and I talked after the meeting. And, um, and, and basically, you know, um, what, what we have to understand is that we have a vested interest in helping seniors, especially something of that magnitude and that size, because this is also how it does not become blank. If we could help support certain things, uh, we also help support it not becoming blanked in this community, especially, like I said, when you have a center of that size, um, and everything. Um, if we can do anything on that end of that cause, it would be really good. Because you know, things become not tended to or kept. Storms come through, break windows, mess up things, and then before you know it, you shut off this part, which happened with a lot of people's homes as well, I come across a lot of people, um, elderly and both that, start shutting off rooms, as the rooms become damaged, they don't have the money. And so, um, if we could, you know, look at our funds and our funds balancing our discretionary funds, specific discretionary funds, and start looking at what we need to do to, um.
And if I may, uh, and if I may elaborate, the funds for this commu- community group has not been dropped down yet. So there is zero balance, and that's why I'm actually just temporarily up this time, it's not a continuous.
Yeah, no, sure, man, if it's legal, yeah, yes, ma'am.
I have a question, I want to confirm, so the balance that you all have left for fiscal year twenty-five, you all want to roll those over to fiscal year twenty-six, 'cause any invoices that's coming in now, it's after January thirty, then those will be in the new fiscal year.
Yes, yeah.
So your balance will roll over and add to?
If I have a balance.
Yeah, uh, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, any more discussion?
No, sir.
Seeing no more discussion, we shall proceed to vote, Commissioner Shepard?
Yes.
Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Rainey?
Yes.
Alright, it is approved, motion carries. Alright, of course, thank you. Alright, commu- uh, agenda item number three, consider an improvement MOU by between Georgia Department of Transportation and City of Cordial, do we have a motion and a second?
So.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second that we consider and approve agreement between, um, Department of Transportation and us. Alright, open for discussion?
Mr. Chairman, this is the agreement that I mentioned in the last, uh, city commission meeting, where you all approved, uh, to move forward with bridge replacement on Front Road. And so the letter of support was provided, and of course, it requires, uh, a seventy-five thousand dollar match, because this is a tier, tier-two project, and, uh, the match is for acquisition of right-of-way. And so if there are funds remaining, after they have completed that, uh, pha- phase of the project, then the funds will be refunded to the city, and again, seventy-five thousand dollar match, uh, over comes from T-Slops.
Would you repeat the last thing again, I'm sorry, the, the, your last sentence?
The seventy-five thousand dollars will, uh, match comes from T-Slops.
Okay, alright, thank you. Think I'm feeling some of that heat. My brain's not operating this quickly. More hydration, um, okay, thank you. Any further discussion on the agenda item number three? Seeing no, shall proceed to vote, Commissioner Rainey?
Yes.
Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepard?
Yes.
Alright, agreement is approved, motion carries. Alright, agenda item number four, consider and approve an ordinance authorizing the State Attorney to initiate, um, judicial, um, repelling all in, um, conflict within. Alright, do we have a motion in the second for agenda item number four?
So.
Second.
Alright, it's been properly moved in second that we consider and approve, alright. I read this, but so the public is aware, um, could either State Attorney give us a?
Sure. And Mr. Chairman, as you know, uh, the commission knows the normal and typical way to collect delinquent taxes is to notice them, levy, fife on the property, and then you have a tax sale on the city office steps. You buy the property in perhaps, then it takes a year, uh, from that, the redemption period is called. Uh, this shortens it by going to court, uh, and the period that you get it after you get the judgment is sixty days. Uh, the Land Bank Authority has some property that, uh, delinquent taxpayer property they'd like to get and move on, and this would, uh, assist that and expedite that process. Uh, so, uh, the city manager and the commission would identify property, and we'd file a petition in court rather than, uh, fife them in a normally, normal way. Kinda rarely used, actually, but, um.
Alright, you've heard the background you all of it. They actually talked about this in some of our trainings that we went to. They talked about how, uh, this had been a help. And I, I think it was one way that, if I want, if I remember correctly, the city of Austin uses a similar process to expedite there, I remember sitting in the class. That's the reason we also spend money on training, because you learn these things, and so sometimes when we deliberate up here, if you've been in a class and learned, you know, uh, how other cities is doing, and if it's legal, or what have you are effective and everything, then we have already been exposed to that knowledge or what have you, and how it works in the, uh, you know, under the same state constitution. Um, that's the effectiveness, or, or the res- the residual return when we go to training and learn that stuff as well, um, that works working and how we can do things better. So, you know, people look at it. So, you know, people look at the training budget and says, you know, who went over and who did that. The goal of it is to come back with information, knowledge and tools to better assist your place, your city. Uh, there you go, man, um, your city and, and better ways of doing things. So, uh, now we can do a better job of coming back and actually coming back with ideals of improvements or what have you. But, um, I think most of the training and what you learn is, is pretty good. As far as what we can return to the, the people of Cordeale, or what have you. People should be a lifelong learner, I believe. Uh, what you know today may be obsolete tomorrow, that's just how much things are moving. So, um, thank you for, for, between you and the city manager for, and I know Mr. Hill. Uh, that's part for your delight there with the land bank as well, so, and that's what we're gonna do, be committed to. Helping out processes that city employees deal with every day, making a little bit more smoother and efficient and effective as well. So, um, I think it's a great thing that we can do as well. All right, any other discussion? All right, seeing now, shall proceed to vote, Commissioner Owens. Commissioner Rainey. Commissioner Shepard. All right, it is approved, all right. Agenda item number five, um, Mobile Communication America Terms and Condition. Um, do we have a motion and a second for agenda item number five? It's been properly moved and seconded, that we consider agenda item number five, uh, agenda, do we, uh, open for discussion?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, um, we received the code to replace a server that is needed. Uh, in the police department, and in doing so, the code on, I think it's the last page. One of the pages had a link, yes, the last page to terms and conditions. And once I clicked on that link, I, uh, realized and discovered that there. There was language that needed to be adjusted so that any litigation take place in Georgia. And not in, I forgot the state it was in, but, uh, anyway, I, uh, sent the information to the city attorney. I asked him to review it and to, uh, prepare a first addendum, and so this addendum. Uh, when approved by the city commission will, uh, change the language that was in the terms and conditions for the code. And we'll be able to move forward with, uh, replacing this server.
So the current state, are we ready to approve it?
Yes.
Okay, has been addressed.
Yes, and the, uh, the company, they have already, uh, reviewed it on their side. And they're fine with the language that was proposed for the addendum.
Any other, um, discussion on it? Seeing now, we shall proceed to vote, Commissioner Shepard. Commissioner Rainey. Commissioner Owens. It is approved, motion carries. All right, which leads us right back to you, city manager, which is the city manager's report.
Good morning, Jan. City management's report for August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. Just have a brief recap of, uh, activities that have occurred since the last meeting last night. Uh, the community cafe was held at Sunset, Sunset Homes, excuse me. And the hospital, uh, presented the program, and as you can see from the photos. They had a very good turnout, uh, last night as well as participation from vendors. City Hall selfie day was held August twelfth, twenty twenty-five, and, um, City Hall selfie day turned ten years old this year. And basically, it's kind of just a fun, uh, tradition to highlight public service and the people. Uh, who work behind the scenes to make things happen in cities across the state. And so this, uh, selfie day was recognized across the state, of course, we had fun, you can see some of the signs where. Probably can't see them from the picture, but we had one that says, give me the money or show me the money and, um, different props. And so, uh, we thank, uh, Ricky Smart for leading this initiative for us and sending the information into D M A. And so, uh, we had a, a good time in, in putting that together. And then also departments were en- encouraged to take their own selfie. And so there were some from the financial department, police department and other departments in the city. The faith-based organizations meeting was held on August twelfth, I think it was, twelfth or fourteen, fourteen, August fourteenth. And, uh, the topic was collaboration, and so, uh, the ministers, they engage in conversation. And are planning activities for the community, so, uh, it was a very good and productive meeting. In terms of upcoming events, Keith Chris Beautiful meeting will be held Wednesday, August twentieth, ten a m. at the Chamber of Commerce. Historic Preservation Commission meeting will be held, uh, Wednesday evening, August twentieth at six o'clock P M. And for those who, uh, have an interest or live in the Gillespie Historic District. Uh, we encourage you to come out because Mrs. Darby has been, uh, working, uh, hard. And looking at, um, Historic District signs for Gillespie. You know, we have Historic District signs in O'Neil, but we do not have Historic District signs in Gillespie. So we encourage all to come out, and again, that meeting is Wednesday, August twentieth at six P M. The, uh, Chris County Community Counciler to meet in will be held on Thursday, August twenty-eighth. At the Dowdy Building located at eleven twenty-nine Fifth Street, and that meeting is held at nine eight a m. Just a few city updates, the dumpster locations for this week. Um, that's good, that location will be open from twelve noon to four P M. on Thursday and Friday. And we have start, well, we, but Public Works have started interviews for that position. Uh, because we, we want to make sure that we can reopen the location on Saturday. Um, but on Saturdays, because we know, you know, a lot of people work, but until then, these are the location hours for this week. Uh, qualification, a qualifying for the general election in November, um, started yesterday. And it will continue through Friday, August twenty-second, from, uh, eight thirty a m. to four thirty P M. The, uh, seats that are up this year at large for Q and War III, the fee is two hundred and seventy dollars. And candidates qualify with the city court. The deadline to register to vote in the November election is October sixth by five P M.
I wanna, I wanna highlight that and make sure the public understands, this week is qualifying week. For anybody who lives in the city, if you wanna run for office, you pay your two hundred and seventy dollars. And you can run for office. If you got criticism of what has been done, and I'm not saying they rightfully, you don't rightfully have a right to criticize, cause you do, or what have you. But, the way I look at it, if you think you can do it better, two hundred and seventy dollars, run your campaign. All contenders welcome. That's the way it works, um, so pay your two hundred and seventy dollars and we appreciate it on the city side. And sign up to run for office, um, it's that simple, you know, um. Because, um, this thing only gets better when we come together. And we work with the people who are elected and not obstruct any plans or. Goals or things that they have, but help refine them, help work with them on it. And if they have shortcomings in those plans, decisions are, they're forgetting something. Uh, that's what the goal is, so I wanna be absolutely clear. Um, that's all it takes, really, you live in the city, city resident, two hundred and seventy dollars. You can run for office, so, please do, if you have a lot to say. Put it on, uh, put yourself on the ballot and see what the community think, uh, of you. And, um, you know, there will be an election, or what have you, um, so that's the way you solve problems. You know, um, then a thong warrior on Facebook, uh, ain't gonna get us there. So, uh, and I'm one of the, one of the best thong warriors as well, uh, so, not criticizing that, but. You know, it's August week into Friday at four, four thirty? Four thirty P M., you can qualify, to run for office yourself, you know, y'all hear it here, so please do. All right, thank you, I just wanna highlight that to the public, so, you know.
All right, uh, twenty twenty-five goes, uh, what I would like to highlight, just a couple is under go. One, I have been in conversation with, uh, railroad companies, uh, to improve the, uh, crossings. On, uh, the right drive, um, as you all know, those who travel the area, there is a need for improvement there. And so, I know improvements were recently made here on Seventh Street. So we wanna make sure that we're making improvements where they are needed, in other areas where they are needed as well. And then, uh, in, in terms of enhancing the employee experience, uh, David mentioned in his report. And I asked him to reach out to Josh Cooley with D M A. so we can start, um, you know, scheduling. The lunch and learn sessions with employees, when Josh came and presented in May. Uh, one of the sessions I had with him was in regards to, uh, coming in. And it's so the employees can have an understanding of, of their retirement benefits. And, uh, last but not least, city offices will be closed Monday, September first, in the reverence of Labor Day. And unless there are any questions, that's all I have in my report today.
Thank you, any questions for the city manager? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Brings us to our city attorney, how you doing, sir, you have anything for us? You don't have nothing for us today, okay, all right, all right, we may appreciate that, all right. With that, anything for our commissioners as we move, well, any reason for executive session? All right, all righty, um. I do have one question, I know part of people's issues is the trash cans. Being on the curb, that agreement comes back up, and if this body wants to do anything differently. We have to get a notice done by when?
I think it's ninety days, so let me confirm that.
Ninety days, and we're getting closer to that ninety days with, it's August, September, so, yeah, we're getting closer to that ninety days, so. Uh, not saying we do, but I just wanna be transparent to the people that. If we wanna do anything different, we have to give a ninety days notice, and I think last year we missed that.
And I'll confirm that it is ninety days, I bet you all know.
Okay, perfect, perfect, all right, anything else from the commissioners?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, just a reference to the, uh, upcoming information I've shared about the upcoming election. Just so that our citizens know as well that, uh, there is a, uh, list. Of voters that have been being inactive because they've not voted into voting cycles. And some people are not fully aware that their name might be appearing on that list. But if you, you need to, uh, check with our local election office, and if your name appears on that inactive voters list. You can simply notify them and let them know that you want to remain on the list. If you don't do that, and your name, and you go to vote at this particular time, you won't be allowed to vote. Uh, so it's important, and so many people are on the list and don't necessarily know that they're on the list. Expungement has taken place throughout the state of Georgia, and there are some people who have this one chance coming up now. And after this election coming up, they will be removed, so you will, you know, so it's, it's imperative that you check. And you can simply check it by, like I said, calling the local office or going to the Secretary of State's website. And you will be able to see your bonus, uh, information as well, so it is important that we keep up, uh, with this. And some people are somewhat surprised that their name appears there.
Anything else from any other? All right, at this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn. It's been properly moved and seconded, that we adjourn this meeting at eleven twenty-five a m. Uh, all the favoritists be known by bar score, ah.